All right, call this meeting to order. We'll start with the plug of allegiance. Oh, welcome, everybody. It's evening. I'll turn things over to the superintendent for tonight's celebration of excellence.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to have such a big crowd. So at first, I'm going to turn it over to our technology education and STEM teacher, Ms. Dory Moore, who's going to make a presentation for us tonight. You can go to the mic if you want. Thank you, Dory.
Um, so this one is.
Is that on?
Oh, it's back here. So, um, I'm up here with my sixth grade superstars. Um, so we have the sixth grade STEM skills class, and um, these are our champion team from the Spiro Hungry Hundred Hippo um, competition. So we're here to talk about them. They didn't want to flog, but.
But they got it. Because they earned it.
Okay, maybe this will work. Oh, technology. Okay, okay. We're good. All right. So uh, what our competition was, was we use the Spiro Bolt robot. Um, and they're from the tech ed budget. Over the past two years, we've acquired five of them. So it's been really um, cool because we can do some really neat challenges with them. The robots connect, they connect to the students' Chromebooks that I just brought, so easier tonight. And you can manually control them, or you can code them. So you can start off with drawing code. Maybe you block code and you go to text code. And one of the neat things is you can also engineer with them. Because we can use solo cups and they fit right over the um, robot. We'll swing her to connect. And Amelia, our driver, will show you back the little world. Technology. Oh, reach. Try it again. Okay, well, I'll keep going on and we'll go to it if not. Okay. So uh, the engineering challenge the kids had to uh, do in the STEM skill class was design and build a hippo like in Hungry Hundred Hippo, so they reach out and collect food. Um, so they were designing hippos that collect ping pong balls, and then they put them into a little pen to store it in. Um, and then the students use the engineering design process to create any solution for the challenge within the um, parameters. I'll do some pictures of some of the sixth graders, you know, enjoying the challenge and engineering. Um, you can keep. Okay, and then this is the competition that we had. So then after they designed their um, robots, we did a double elimination challenge. Um, where the students, we determined the class winner by determining who collected the most um, ping pong balls in their collection bin. Uh, and then from the three classes, then we had a final um, championship that we livestreamed to all the sixth grade classes. And that's where we got our Hungry Hundred Hippo team. Haley, Penelope, Amelia, and Sage won. Um, and we could see, if you want to hit play on that, you can see a little clip of one of our matches in progress. So they get kind of.
So awesome. Can I be in that class?
Age gets mad. That was from like the first round. Yeah, so. Oh, my gosh. Really showing off. Um, you can go to the next one. And then, so there's our champion and our championship team, and we use the 3D printers. They got these fabulous trophies to take home. Um, and then. And so these girls are going to peek on some of the things from our challenge. So what were some challenges that your team ran into along the way?
Uh, some challenges we ran into were at first, we completely changed the design of our cup. At first, we had like popsicle sticks in the front. It was too much weight. So we changed it into cups and like this plastic. And then we had this super large end that we would store all the ping pong balls in. So we had to cut it because it didn't fit the requirement. So.
Good. Um, what part of the design did you really like?
So our favorite part of the design was obviously flash and slot. But um, another part we liked was I was double sided, so we could collect double the amount of ping pong balls.
Yeah, a lot of kids, um, it's hard to have a front on it. So you guys figured out that the three sticks is better. Good. And if you were to do this project again, what would you do differently?
And what did you enjoy about engineering challenge?
I tried going out and distributing the weight around all the sides of the cups to figure out what was not melted over.
And Amelia has the connections. We're ready to roll and give the final. Let's try it at first.
That's awesome.
You can change the colors on it. You can change the speed. Um, they actually can, you can code it to like make noises to from the computer. So there's all sorts of things. We've done battle bots challenges. Um, they're probably this year going to do some mini golf things, or teams will design like mini golf hole, and then the other kids will have to code to see if they, how many, you know, putts it takes to get into the hole. I don't know if they'll do well on the carpet. Well, probably might be too much friction.
Oh, there you go.
It is a slot.
That's awesome. That is great. Good job. Amelia, Haley, Penelope, and Sage, fantastic job. That was awesome. And thank you also to your amazing teacher, Ms. Moore. Great job. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce our art teacher from Southminster High School, Mr. Greg Gallo, who is going to share. What did I say? Wow. Holy cow. Bolton High School, everybody. That's where we are and apparently where I need to be tonight. Great. Good to see you. Please introduce us to this amazing artist.
Today, we brought in Bella Crease's art portfolio. Uh, Bella has excelled in our program here, as well as we recommended her for a program over at the Art School, where she took four weeks this summer, studying from nine to four, uh, doing drawing in the morning for three hours, and then in the afternoon photography for two weeks, and then afternoon clay for two weeks. And here is all of the stuff that she made in school and out of school uh, that we're putting together for her college portfolio. Uh, they had a nice show at the end with all the work, and uh, she invited me to attend that over at the Art School. And at the end of it all, um, she got awarded a scholarship of $25,000 for four years.
Very excited about that, Bella, but I'm certain your parents are more excited.
Absolutely amazing artwork. You are a very talented young lady, and wherever you decide to go, it couldn't be very lucky to have you. Congratulations. Thank you very much as well. That concludes our celebration of excellence for tonight. I think I'm done. Let's go.
Okay, uh, to our regularly scheduled part of our uh, comments from the audiences. Is there anyone over here who would like to make a public comment this evening? Okay. Uh, additions to the agenda. An answer routine business and approval of minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the September 14th, 2023 Board of Education Business Meeting minutes. Then are there any questions, comments, or edits to these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, opposed, standing, that passes um, onto committee reports and giving warrants of version.
This year, the budget is, we expect it to be expanded. We said it's beginning of the year, and that's what we do. And uh, 13% has been extended versus last year with 13% as well. And uh, Superintendent Tech will finish the uh, plans of rest.
Great, thank you. So you do have a transfer list in front of you. Uh, we have four transfers for September. One was for additional textbooks needed for Spanish III. Uh, one was a reclassification to uh, purchase an online subscription. One was to cover the increase in cost of social studies teacher license, and one to cover a shipping shortfall on a PO that had already been ordered. So I would need a motion to approve those transfers, please.
Make a motion to approve the transfers. Then Diana, do we have any questions or comments on these? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, standing, everybody.
No, I have one other piece. Um, for non-fiduciary activity funds, um, this is something that uh, the Board of Selectmen put into place to address um, a citation that we have had on the audit report for a number of years, and it was something that uh, uh, an account that they needed to create. So this is the um, unaudited accounting of our non-fiduciary activity funds. And you'll see that we have uh, five for BCS and uh, 10 for the high school. Uh, these are kind of in-out student-type activity funds. Um, just a notation as well. Um, the one uh, regarding the um, sports piece, that's a portion that pay-to-play puts in, as well as a portion of that is supported by the Board of Ed budget. So there's two pieces that support that one piece. Any questions on this list? Hearing none, I would need a uh, motion to approve the 2223 non-fiduciary activity parts, please. I'll make a motion.
Yuri and Ben, do we have any questions on these? On all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing. All right, that handles finance. Onto curriculum. We, we have any curriculum?
Well, they met um, on October 2nd, um, and they discussed the updated uh, teacher evaluation that is coming forward for next year and the process that we're going through this year and revising it, along with every other district in the state of Connecticut, um, along with the new requirements for that, our PD plans for this year, and K5 for you.
Thank you. Onto personnel. Our personnel committee has had a couple of meetings, mostly regarding the custodians contract, uh, which we'll be discussing later in executive session. Also of note, at the town meeting last night, the teacher's contract was approved by the town. So. Uh, that's it for personnel. Onto BHS Student Representative Reports.
On October 5th, Bolton High School held the annual college fair. Over 80 colleges, technical schools, and even military branches were in attendance, and students learned a lot about what each college has to offer and which might be a good fit. And on October 15th, Student Council scheduled a Powderpuff game that will take place from 11 to 1:00 PM. Interest has been high, and we are hopeful to have many girls sign up to play black football.
Thanks, sir.
A day prior to the Powderpuff game, BHS will host a homecoming dance on October 15th. The dance will have a fall ball theme from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Students have been selling tickets during both lunch waves for $5 each. Tickets will also be sold at the door. This dance is for Bolton students only. However, future dances may include guests. And the sports up till now, the volleyball team is uh, 3-7 as of Tuesday, with a home game against Summers on Friday. World Soccer Team is 2-4-2, with an away game against Summers on Friday. The Boys Soccer Team is 3-2-2, with a home game against Summers on Friday. The Cross Country Team, B Coventry and East Granby, at their last meet before Tuesday, the Los Elinton at that meet. They had a meet yesterday on the 11th, and NCCCs will be on the 25th of October.
Thank you, Amber and Erin, very much. You are welcome to stay, but if you have other things that you need to do for school, yeah, good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Uh, we're on to community meeting reports. Has anyone been to any applicable meetings? Notes?
You guys went last night?
I mean, we went to the town meeting, which I just mentioned. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, now I'll turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of schools reports.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to introduce Director of Teaching and Learning, Monica Chilio-Casper, and she is going to share survey data that we collected last fall. Uh, then uh, Mr. Misselli and Mr. Giard, and our team of outstanding teacher leaders are here tonight to talk about the plans that they developed uh, using the survey results and other uh, necessary academic information and testing data and results that we had to form our school plans for this year. Monica?
Thank you. Um, so we thought this would be a good way to lead into the school improvement plans. Um, these are our student and parent survey results. And we are going to be posting them question by question, but figured if you didn't want to be here for about an hour and a half, so we're going to consolidate some of that. We did send two surveys to Bolton families in May and June. Uh, we also surveyed our students at that time. Uh, the first survey was mostly general information. Survey two had some more specific questions. Um, and we surveyed students in grades six through 12 as well. Our questions were vetted through these two agencies, Connecticut State Department of Education, uh, they contracted with Panorama Surveys, and the US Department of Education School Climate Surveys. Um, the parent survey questions fell largely into clusters. So what, what you're going to look at is the consolidated um, questions for communication, respect and sense of belonging, um, approachability of staff, like access, especially from the parent survey, like can I access my child's teacher? Um, quality of instruction from that question point of view, and technology quality and accessibility. Um, survey two had specific questions that were um, a little bit more detailed regarding to some extracurricular activities and school facilities. So the BCS parents were surveyed twice in two different categories. First was pre-K through five, then the six through eight. And as you can see, generally, we are on the high-end neutral, is that neither, like, I don't agree or disagree, which means either you don't know the answer to that question generally, or you don't have a strong opinion about it. So they're mostly in clusters. I would say we had about altogether, I want to say 27 questions, in two different surveys. We tried to make them shorter and more manageable, and then wound up having to. Um, you can also see the total number of people who were responding. 91 parents responded the first time, and 62 parents responded the second. Those are pre-K to five results. Our six through eight, slightly lower, um, 53 parents responded the first time, 43 parents responded the second time. I'm just trying to think if there is anything that, as usual, they're the same. They were the same questions for pre-K to five, six to eight, and nine through 12. And the BHS parent surveys, 70 for survey one, 49 for survey two. And the reason why I'm giving you the end and the, the numbers there um, are because we um, we, we know that when we're dealing with small numbers, that percentages can be skewed. And the other thing that you'll see is neutral is in the middle. You'll see the plus sign. And the reason why we're using this delta sign instead of, say, a negative or a minus is because we know that those are areas where we want to change and improve. And that's what's largely going to drive our plans. The student survey questions were slightly different, more about the relevance and importance of coursework and how they felt about their coursework. Did they feel respected and that they had a sense of belonging in their school? Did they feel that their teachers were invested in their success and that they were easy to access? Did they feel safe in school? Uh, did they have access to technology, extracurricular activities? Did they feel that the school communicated with their families? And um, oh, sorry, access to technology, or technology quality, that it was meaningful and technology that they needed? So we surveyed students in the middle school at BCS. There were 142 students who responded, and you can see again, you're going to see some more results overwhelmingly positive. Some students who were just kind of in the middle and didn't feel like they had a strong opinion. And then some students, this is a combination of like, you know, kind of where they feel um, they don't agree with what the student was that makes me. And the BHS student surveys, 170 students responded. So this is just a little snippet of what we're always looking at when we want to improve. Because are we communicating enough? Are we making sure that students feel like they have a place in school and that they have a sense of belonging and that they're learning something that's relevant to their lives? And that's really the crux of what we um, try to reach in the surveys. And with that, I am going to reset this, so that we have the student, uh, the school improvement plan, and turn it over to Principal Misselli and Principal Giard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica. Uh, I, I will tell you this, that you put a survey out, you never know what you're going to get. Um, but we had a real celebration this summer. We enjoyed going through these results, looking at the questions and looking at the answers. It was very validating uh, for us, by us, I mean, uh, our leadership team. So each of our buildings has a group of uh, teacher leaders who are going to be introduced to you tonight. And we spent um, some quality time this summer, really looking at the district plan, the data, um, and everything that's happened in our schools last couple of years to come up with our next steps.
Leaders, come on up. And while they're coming up, the work happened in the summer, but I want to reiterate what went into it. So we looked at our school plan now that we've had for several years. We looked at last year, a couple of years, and that was a very long conversation. What type of progress have we made? We looked at the assessment data that comes out faster than ever now, for smarter balance and other assessments. And then we looked at the survey data. So all those pieces went into the development of this year's plan. With a lot of, a lot of leaders.
Lot of work to be done.
So here in the first slide, I do, I'm not going to read it all to you, but each school has a plan directly tied to the strategic plan. The academic leaders were the ones that did the work over the summer, so we were ready to go. The opening of school, we presented the plans to the staff at the beginning of school, and the action steps that will coincide with the different goals. Um, included a three-tier, uh, three multi-year goals, and we're in year two of implementation. So if you remember last year's presentation, some of those are similar in continuations to some of those goals.
All right, so the members of our school leadership team for BCS are obviously Mr. Giard, Mrs. Kelleher, then we have Dan Ayer for Fine Arts, Kelly Bear, Health and P, Jennifer Harret, Library and Media, Chris Jones, BTE, Diana Mikalochi and Alicia Rose for Math, Sandy Miss Ricky and Alex things Russo of Science, Wendy Gani and Lauren Smith for BLA, Chris Palace for Languages, and Tracy Wunsch and Rick Lambert for Social Studies.
Uh, so this is a graphic we created to capture the different goals that we have. So we have a goal focused around our school home partnership, federal community, our learning environment, puzzle piece. And this, last year, we talked about teacher clarity, which is a part of our instruction. We, we made a more broad instruction because we have a lot, including like the reading programs, the work that we're doing. So we made a little bit more broad. And as you can see, all the puzzle pieces connect, perform the, the kind of the graphic there, which connects all to the fortune of a graduate, the BOG.
And the strategic plan.
And the strategic plan.
Thank you.
So our first goal that we're working on is to um, improve and enhance our school community partnership. Um, we really want everyone in the community to feel like they are a member of our school. Um, and one way we are trying to do that is through some communication, communication methods. Um, we've had Power School. K5 has been doing community newsletters and five, five usually newsletters. Now our whole school um, is doing newsletters. Um, you have Facebook and Instagram, but the one key thing that I think has changed is Parent Square, and I say that coming from the parent perspective, as I am a parent in school. Parent Square is amazing, the fact that you can get that communication easily and be able to look back and say, oh, I remember seeing this, and go back into your feed and be able to find it is really powerful. And it helps keep everyone on the same page. We're all getting that same indication. Uh, we're also trying to expand our opportunities um, for families to be involved in school, uh, through assemblies, our concerts, our shows, sporting events. Uh, we're bringing back our K5 Winter Family Night and the Six Eight Family Event, uh, of course conferences that we've had, and our student-led conferences. Um, and of course, our wonderful PTA has so many amazing events. Um, the second goal is to enhance the learning environment. Uh, we want to nurture a productive learning culture that's founded on positive and meaningful relationships in order to improve student outcomes and achievement. But that part, that ending is very important, with student outcomes and achievement. That's our goal. Um, that we know positive and meaningful relationships are the foundation of a productive learning culture, which includes an environment that supports taking risks, asking questions, making and learning from mistakes. And it's also, we're also having our staff take a look at the physical space and the physical environment um, in the classroom, because we know that's very important to build um, positive relationships and um, a safe environment also. Um, so we will review and refine the physical environment routines, classroom behavioral expectations through our PBIS, uh, the emotional environment, and the learning environments that support the um, EPS transferable skills and portrait for the graduate. Um, and we're going to do that through, these are some of the things that we're doing this year. We just had um, on Tuesday, professional development on trauma and foreign practices. We'll continue to do that, um, refining agreed upon school-wide expectations through our wonderful PBIS. Um, we've started to have town hall meetings by grade level to review a lot of those PBIS expectations. Um, we'll continue with Ready to Learn for Middle School, um, which will hopefully decrease, decrease ODRs and suspensions. And then we've started this year, closing Brooke, connected to the school plan, and that's, you know, um, when somebody comes in and visits the classroom, can they find a strength in the, in what the classroom teacher's doing, and then maybe an area that they would like that teacher to grow in, to improve in. Um, and um, our end goal, um, these actions, we're hoping will increase student engagement, academic achievement, and expected reading peers. Um, those are two books that um, teachers are using. The kids first is more for like K5, and then building, we're also using building academic community. So those are two of our resources.
Our third goal is about effective instructional practices. And BCS will continue to build habits of mind to systematically and efficiently analyze standards, build curriculum, teach with clarity, incorporate effective instructional practices, and assess learning. So last year, all K-5 teachers worked on developing learning progressions, learning intentions, and success criteria, along with all six to eight teachers in their content area and unified arts. And this year, we plan to refine those learning intentions and success criteria, and also make sure that K-5 teachers in their other subjects are at least saying the learning intentions and the success criteria orally, and if not, hopefully written down. Um, but as we know, if our students are able to explain what they are learning and why, and know how they will get there, they'll be able to acknowledge their pathway to proficiency. Then the new Imagine Learning Classroom is the EL education reading program for K-5 this past year, or this year. And right now, we've already noticed some effective instructional practices and strategies that are being implemented in it. And at our PD last week, they went And at our PD last week, they went over specific protocols. And as you can see on the next step, engagement is another area we're working on. And they were all protocols to build, to get the students up out of their seats or collaborating with one another. So that was very exciting. In addition to the instructional practices, we are working on strategies to help our students be successful with the IAVs and the FIAV. So their interim assessment blocks are focused interim assessment blocks. And these are very similar to the SBAF assessment. So they're getting that practice and this also helped them with test-taking habits for any assessments that they have. In addition, um, our ILTFV VCS has every month new learning. So one member or two members together will come with a new learning and then we'll talk about it. And then we are discussing ways how we can disseminate it to our staff so that we are all professionally learning together. And last not least, our SRVI process, which is soon to be known as Multi-Tierred Systems of Support or MTSS. This is the process we use um, to make sure if any students are struggling with the tier-one core instruction. That they are receiving what they need in either tier-two or tier-three with small groups, scientific, we research-based strategies. And that they were, they are followed and we keep up with them based on data and their performance.
Alright, so taking over for the high school um, side of the ring. Thank you. Um, so to introduce our high school leadership team, you will know, notice there is a little bit of overlap. Some of our academic leaders um, serve us not only at the high school, but they are working down at VCS as well as more district-wide academic leaders. So we have Dan Air, once again, for Arts. Um, I'm Jen Carvalla, with that is Science. Colin Dennis is gonna be here this evening, but he's our English academic leader. Stephanie Pochet is our Health and PE leader. Padgi and Santi are, represents guidance in our student support services. Christine Johnson, Dina Students. Uh, Chris Jones, once again, CTE. Robert Jordan is that math leader. McGee Klepper is Library Media. Joe Muselli, Principal. Uh, Chris Palace for Languages. And then Abby Sacco for Social Studies. Um, so similar as, as already been mentioned um, by Joe and Monica, we spent a lot of time in summer looking at survey data and the results and using that to drive what direction we wanted to move in. Uh, we met a total of four times over the summer. Truly was a collaborative effort to put together our three focus areas, our three goals. Um, to connect it back to district goals and the strategic plan. All of them fully support goal number one, which is student success. Um, goal two also then taps, um, uh, one and two add in caring culture. And then the third one is going to throw in talent development. So we're really hitting three out of the four district goals within this plan. Um, but again, really using that survey data to drive the direction we wanted to move in. So our first goal um, also focuses on school and family community partnerships. Um, and our goal is to continue to promote school-home community partnerships to support the learning of all students. Some of our action steps for this year um, is again, using a variety of technologies to communicate with families, including Power School. Parents Square, as Diana mentioned, we love at the high school. Um, we started piloting it last year. Found a lot of success for it and have continued using it even more robustly this year. Um, social media, we have a social media presence. Um, so we're using, you know, various modalities to really foster that communication. Um, going along with that, we're also evaluating what's working, what's not working, so that we can tweak as we need to. Um, and then looking at ways to create opportunities to share student growth. So parent-teacher conferences um, in the past have not been a very regular occurrence at the high school. But we've been working to, to build those up here on and continuing to do so. We started late last spring, developing student summative digital, digital portfolios for students to track their mastery of um, our transferable skills and all aspects of fortune of a graduate. So we're really working to really dig in deep with that this year. Um, which gives students a way to kind of track their progress, but also gives parents the ability to see what's happening throughout the four years. Um, and then our capstone evening um, is another way that we um, are looking to just always improve and, and make better year after year of a great capstone committee. Um, to really help us share what students are doing in terms of, of growth. Um, what's not on the side, but I think is important to mention for both schools, as part of our teacher evaluation plan. One of our, one aspect of that is a communication goal. So even though it's not formally listed as our goals, just be aware that that is something that every teacher, as part of their teacher evaluation plan. Um, has a component that looks at ways that they personally can, can enhance that communication.
Alright, our next um, goal was school environment. And this is then to create a positive and supportive learning environment that promotes high expectations for student achievement. We know that when um, students feel that they um, belong and they feel safe in the school environment. They are going to do better academically. And some of the ways that we are doing um, that this year is we've decided to modify our connections block, which means twice a week. To have better support for students, um, especially academically. The students are with, on the same teacher for um, three years. They're, they're all together as freshmen. And then um, from sophomore, junior and senior year, they're with um, one teacher and they continue to go with them. Um, and by having this support. Um, students are able to have another adult in the classroom that maybe isn't necessarily a classroom teacher. And this year, we are focusing on academics on, on Wednesdays, our connection clocks are Wednesdays and Thursdays. And then um, that's a set time for students to look at their grades, but their um, connections teacher to also look at their grades and have conversations with them. Um, about ways that they can improve. Maybe, oh, why don't you go and see this teacher and see if there's something that you can, can work on. Um, also, we're exploring strategies to improve student executive functions, skills, those habits of mind, um, time management. And ways that students can be proactive with um, their work and activities. And continuing to use our climate and culture committee to foster a collaborative and positive environment in the school. We do um, student of the month. Um, as well as teacher of the month, which is student nominated. Um, and celebrations um, every month for those students. Their picture gets to go up on the bulletin board and they get it to check it. Um, and we also participated in the trauma-informed practice training as well. Um, our final goal is to improve instructional practices. Our goal is to cultivate a professional learning community that collaborates to improve instructions, student performance and achievement. So one of the things that we really pulled out of the survey was that students um, really wanted to understand the relevancy of what they were learning in. So really trying to find ways of conveying to the students why what they're learning is relevant to the past and relevant to like beyond high school as well. So exploring methods to improve that understanding is so that students see the connection between content and past relevancy. Um, we're going to further develop opportunities for students to receive their feedback on their academic progress. Um, whether that be feedback on where they are on the transferable skills or even just feedback on an assignment, they know what they can do to improve on the next assignment. And design and facilitate learning experiences for faculty members using the PLCs that we meet weekly in as well as PD throughout the year. And um, begin planning for the implementation of the multi-tiered system of um, supports, which is the SRVI RTI. Program that's supposed to be related from the state level. So when we're doing all of this work, primarily PLCs and team grade level meetings. And again, the PLCs meet on every week. At our monthly staff meetings and our monthly fourth Tuesday, which are department meetings, as well as the early release PD days throughout the calendar year and the full day professional development days. Um, and if we have team and content area PD time, um, looking at it, our TVAL goals, so the teacher evaluation plan goals, many, many students, um, teachers set their goals around these um, different areas of the plan and our leadership team meetings where we meet weekly as well.
Thank you for your participation. Any questions?
Yep.
A question about, you need to go through that. It's the first time you've done a survey like this? Okay, so are you looking at the numbers from this survey or are you looking at that, that's from the previous survey, this is C and just kind? Like it's been to the postponing hangover or how is?
We definitely, sorry.
No, to your point, uh, we definitely spent a lot of time developing the plan, thinking about two thousand nineteen, with that school you're heading into the, the pandemic and then post. And definitely with student level of engagement, that was a big topic, like how engaged the students are. Which led to, I'm just giving you an example to that creation of RTL, the Ready to Learn, which is a new uh, system we're using in the middle school with, with students, really to make sure they're coming to class. Uh, ready to put in the effort, that they have the materials with them, Chromebook, homework, um, and that they're engaged. So it truly is looking at multi-years of the data to help to drive it. And it's a very rich conversation.
Jen, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'd say similar, we, you know, maybe didn't put number by number, side by side, but having, this isn't the first time we've analyzed survey results. So having had these conversations yearly, we, we see where the trends are and what areas keep kind of popping up and where we see the most growth and what's working, what's not working.
Was frequency of future. We have, does it happen every year?
Wait, Scott, I'm sorry, I can't hear the question.
For future surveys.
Yeah, so let me speak to that if I could. So um. Currently, in the current teacher evaluation plan, we're required to do a survey. The teacher evaluation program is changing this year. And a survey is no longer a requirement. However, there is a new law that is going to require there to be climate surveys done. We don't know what those look like yet. We don't know if the state is giving us a model or not. We used model survey questions from both the state and, and the feds that they, that are currently out there for this survey and for previous surveys that we had done previously. Um. It is my intent that we are going to use, maybe not every single question that we did, because we did two surveys and it was a lot this time around. I think we need to maybe pare that down a wee bit to give this spring. I don't know what next year will bring, because I don't know what the state's going to do, if they're going to mandate that we all use the same program and have to share that data, or if each district is going to be allowed to do their own thing. So that is sort of like a stay tuned, but we definitely will be giving a survey to give us data that we can compare to even for this year, right, to last year. Great questions. Other questions?
Any questions? Uh, the um, trauma-informed strategy. Why, why did you, is that a trend that schools are being required to do or are you finding that there is a great need for trauma-informed strategy?
I, I think it's a great question. And Beth, if you want to speak to trauma-informed practices, how that came about?
And why were doing training for all staff?
Sure. So um, in every school district, Bolton, it's not excluded. We have a number of students who have put some pretty significant trauma backgrounds. And knowing how to form relationships with those students is really important, different than dealing with a kid without a trauma background. So we began our work uh, with the administrators. We started with a professional development learning opportunity for administrators. And then at the beginning of the school year, we had, on the first day back, we did district-wide training. And then um, on our PD day this week, we had one site at uh, Bolton Center School, one site at the high school. So we did three-hour sessions at each school, really more like scenario-based, talking maybe some kid-specific things, about what we can do to help these kids be more successful in the classroom. With relationships and academics and um, just overall. So it's really, it's a need that we're seeing with many of our students. And um, we were fortunate enough to find what I think is a phenomenal presenter, had person really good feedback. Um, so I think it's something that uh, is really beneficial for some of our kids and will continue to be, will continue to work.
And good practice and, and information for our staff too, one hundred percent.
Everybody at the beginning of this whole year, we had cafeteria workers, custodians, admin assistants, everybody. Because the way you respond to a student who's in a, maybe a crisis or a heightened situation can set the tone for that day or for several days. So we really want everybody to kind of get on board with how to um.
Support.
Support these, these kids who are really struggling.
Are you collecting data to see how your, your interventions are working or is there any?
Um, I would say we have data on some students because some of the students have plans already. Um, so we are collecting some data, but on the trauma-informed piece specifically, not yet. We're not at that point yet. We're kind of just learning about it and learning some best practices and how to implement things. But that might be something that, that we do down the road. But we're hoping that maybe, you know, less office referrals and less children having um, you know, up a, they're like melting down and, and not able to, to console themselves.
Or to engage in learning at all, because they're so upset.
So I think that will be the data that we'll be collecting at some point. Great question.
Just one other anecdotal data pieces in the meetings that we're having with teachers, PLCs, that you're live conversation, how great the PD has been. And teachers are using the strategies that have talked about in the planning for students this year already. And we just got the training. So that anecdotal.
Any other questions? We have an amazing team and they are doing outstanding work. And I want to thank them all very much for being here tonight and presenting their school plans and all the work they did over the summer to make it happen and all the work they do this year to lead and move our district forward. Great job. Thank you all very much. You can feel free to stay or quickly get out of Dodge. I'll leave it all up to you.
So close.
Oh, you're so funny. Alright, so that concludes our school improvement plans. And now just gonna give them a chance to settle in here. Thank you again, everybody. Blood for punishment, the two of you. I'm gonna turn it back over to Monica to give you a K, brief K five reading update.
Very short. I have kept you informed every step of the way. I just wanted to give you a quick update where we are and then we'll move on to the next um, presentation. So at the start of the school year, teachers in grades K through five began piloting the modules for YO, Imagine Learning. We are currently in a pilot year zero. And teachers were provided training on the digital platform in spring of last year. So that they could have access to all materials in preparation for the current materials arriving in September. This program, with the exception of classroom library books, is fully available digitally and in print. So we know that as a professional, we all, we've loved to have our teachers' manuals in print so that we can write in them and we can touch them and we can kind of jog your pages, but everyone had access to all of the materials um, beginning in the spring. Uh, we're very happy with the quality of the materials and supporting documents and software. YO, Imagine Learning is rigorous and includes an abundance of resources that require time to go through. As such, we will be using a combination of PD and release time to allow teachers time to collaborate as they examine the full scope of the program. And that was part of the PD um, these last couple of days in October. On October sixth and October tenth of this year, K five teachers received module training. And additional sessions are planned for February and an additional date to be determined in the spring. So we are going to do the full day in February. They're going to pick another check-in date in case there are any questions or things that teachers have discovered along the way that they may need some support with. Foundational skills continue to be taught using our established phonemic awareness and phonics programs. So those are still currently in place. And it's a shame that they all left, because I really can't say enough about the willingness of the K five staff. Um, super, just, they jumped in with both feet. And now we're being approached by other districts who are a little bit behind us saying, what does it look like? Can we come see it? And we're saying, we're not ready yet. We're, we're still learning too. But it's nice that um, that we have with a bit more background than some other districts. So they are now looking to us for some information. So.
Thank you, Monica. Any questions for Monica about K five reading? Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to food services.
It's um, yeah, we have it.
Okay, so. Okay, thank you. So um, our projected revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three was two hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. And our unaudited revenue was three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars. And this was And this was, uh, we received eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars more than projected. Just want to remind everybody that last year, again, we had free uh breakfast and lunch meals. That money went up to the end of December and we didn't have it in January, February. Then it started up again and we didn't know it was going to till like mid-February. It started up again in March and went to the end of the year. So it was like a revolving door for food services last year and monies. Um, the USDA continued the supply chain assistance grant. Um, we have spent down all of our money by September thirtieth of this year, which we have already done. We did opt in to participate in the smart funds um extending districts' ability to provide free meals to all students, like I just said. Um, and we received um sixty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and a whopping fifty-two cents more than the initial allocation uh that we had been told we were going to receive. Um, our projected expenditures were three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Our unaudited expenditures ended up being three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. So we expended forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars more than we projected that we would. So we began uh last year with a fund balance of a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. We had a surplus of three thousand, seventy-nine dollars and we had an ending fund balance of a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars that we started this year with. Our projected revenue for this year, and I will just offer, this is a ginormous stab in the dark. Um, you know, suddenly now we have free breakfast for all this year. There is other conversation happening about there may be other changes, whether it be at the federal or state level. So again, this is our best guess, projected revenue for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, projected expenses of three hundred and sixty thousand, six oh four. So with that being said, we would project an ending balance of twelve thousand, six dollars to roll over to next year. I will offer, I don't really think this is accurate. I think we're going to end with a lot more money than that, but right at this moment in time, this is what Kasal is allowing me to say. So that's really what I want to say about that. Um, but again, I just want to remind the board, I have been reminding you about this now for several years, that this conversation happened before the start of the pandemic. Then it sort of ended because of what happened during the pandemic with food services. But you know, potentially, we are going to come to a time where it may be necessary for the board to put into funds. Currently, we remain a self-funded program. We have some other things in the work where we're, we're trying to tweak things and see if we can make some changes. And again, waiting for other potential changes that may come at various federal and or state levels. Any questions for me about this right now?
Well, I would say in addition to our ongoing history and pattern with it, food prices can't be helped.
Food prices have hurt us tremendously, one hundred percent. Correct. Yeah. When, and that coupled with, you know, not that I'm finding fault with this, but right, minimum wage went up, which caused us to also raise our wages, right, to hire qualified staff to come in and to prep meals and serve our students. So it's, it's a, it's a combination of a lot of pieces for sure. That concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you. Um, unfinished business, we have no hope. And new business, we have any resignation?
Uh, I do have uh one resignation um from V H S chemistry teacher, Kevin Hartman. And I want to thank him for his service in both public schools and wish him well.
Great. Uh, future business, have no best also. So now I'm looking for.
Invite Beth too.
Oh, yes. Uh, a motion to go into executive session concerning a discussion of the tentative agreement with the custodians union and also confidential attorney client communications and to invite the superintendent and director of all center.
Someone.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you, everyone. Oh, all good. Our post standing. Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you, everybody.